Concerning general approval or before?
Which ones you get?
No, yeah.
Those, yeah. I ordered those online. You know where I first got them? We went to, I went to a BP meeting.
Welcome everybody tonight to this regular scheduled board meeting. If you have cell phones or other electronic devices, please silence them or turn them off. Ms. Surr, would you lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here together this evening and conduct the business of the great people of Walton County. We thank you for the little rain we're getting outside and that it's not sleeting cold as it has been. And we do pray for those that live north of us that are experiencing bad weather. We pray that you will conduct them safely through this latest ice storm. We ask that you help us to conduct the business here and it will be to the benefit of everyone in Walton County. We pray for those that serve us from our public works to people to our sheriff's department, everyone who helps make Walton County the great county it is. In all this, we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, first thing on the agenda, is any, consider any additions or deletions? Mr. Jones?
We would like to remove the mutual aid agreement with the city of Freeport. We're going to work collectively with all the municipalities to get those documents together for your consideration. Mr. Chairman, we would recommend that we remove the mutual aid agreement for fire services from, with the city of Freeport. We're going to work to, work collectively with all the municipalities to create a better document and bring that back for your consideration at a later date.
Okay. Motion to accept that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any public comments from the audience concerning any agenda item? Seeing none, reference to the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Can I add something to number three? It just needs to say, and Dee Dee may have already done this, but it's two tennis courts and one underage ten court. Okay, she already fixed it. I've got my screen up here and it didn't show it, so we're good. Thanks.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Jones? Oh, yeah. Mr. Alfred, I believe you had something you wanted to state.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to let you know, we're excited to announce, we now have our broadways and abuse hotline up on our website. We have a link off of your website as well. It is for public consumption. So, it is available right now. Just let you know, if anyone starts a ticket on it, we then create a file that goes to our intermodal department. They'll be processing those. And if you start a ticket, you'll get a specific key that will let you back in to follow up and see what progress has been made on the tickets.
Is it anonymous?
It's totally anonymous, 100 percent.
Okay.
So you can turn your neighbor in now and not be?
Absolutely. But it's, it's, it's not so much as catch somebody doing something wrong, but it's a great deterrent. So if you could advertise that among all the board staff, that would be a good thing for us.
Thank you. Commissioner Mender?
I want to say something before we get started in our regular meeting. We met last, two Tuesdays ago in the Defuniac Springs in the middle of ice and snow and all that sort of thing, and had to adjourn. And the rest of the week, we spent pretty much, I stayed in, but our public works people did not. Our public works people were out here on the bridge, they were on the roads, they were everywhere making sure that if we traveled in Walton County, we were safe. And I think I speak to the entire board here when I say thank you to the gentleman. They were out there in the cold while I was in the warm and making it safe, and I appreciate it.
Okay, we got a little house.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add that too. Also, the public safety people, both the sheriff's department and our EMS people were out there doing the same things, and it was a combined effort, and so my hats off to all of them.
Very well, thank you. Got a little house, Cleveland, we got to do, we got to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item, we had some discussion at our last meeting regarding the proposed fireworks legislation. We have provided you some further documentation. However, in conversation with our lobbyist yesterday, it's her belief that this legislation really doesn't have any legs or traction and is probably not going to move forward. So, we can certainly discuss it if you wish, but we will, if not, we'll keep an eye on it. If it looks like it's going to move forward, we'll bring it back for discussion later time.
Well, I actually think we should be proactive. I'm sorry, I think we should go out of the gate and pass a resolution or whatever saying that we are opposed to, to the new legislation. Because I know what it would do to South Walton, everybody had their own fireworks down here at the Fourth of July, and I'm, I just think we need to be opposed to it. So I'll make that motion.
Was, was the proposed legislation giving each county the option to opt out?
That's correct.
But the problem with that is, if Bay County doesn't opt out, and Oaklus County doesn't opt out, then we're stuck in the middle of two counties that are selling fireworks.
You got to stay just to the north that you can get all you want.
Yeah, but I'm opposed to it.
So what's your motion?
I made a motion that we draft a resolution opposing the bill.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. The next item, we have an offer to purchase some property in the Mossy Head Industrial Park. The makers of that offer are here, and they wish to withdraw that offer. That is, was presented by Steve Yule from Andrews and Arndorf Realty. So, we're going to pull that for your consideration at the moment. We also, they also, before we get there, we have, I sent you an email earlier regarding, we had a place marker here anticipating a proposal for the Mossy Head Industrial Park, Steve will be right there, from Empire Trucks to expand their purchase from 10 to 15 acres, which would be the immediate five acres to the west. If you can see on the right side of the screen, that is, that was, that's the 10 acre parcel they're, they're wanting to buy an additional five acres immediately to the west of that, at the same terms and conditions of their initial offer, and we certainly recommend the board accept that proposal.
Motion to, motion to approve the request?
Now I'm confused.
Okay.
Okay, questions?
We approved, I don't know, a month ago perhaps, to accept a proposal for a 10 acre site. That first 10 acres there from Empire Trucks. They are, they have requested that that be expanded to 15 acres under the same terms and conditions of their offer. So, we're recommending you approve that, and then we'll get to that one.
Okay, so, okay.
I believe we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Let me just add one thing. That's, of course, conditioned upon compliance with 125.37 like before.
That's great.
Okay. Now Commissioner, what you had in your hand was an offer from Mr. Yule's client, Mr. Brian Brigman, which replaces the offer that we had in a board package. The originally offer was for 20 acres that would lie west of the Empire Truck site by virtue of agreeing to sell Empire an additional five acres. There's only about 15 acres remaining there. This proposal from Mr. Big Brigman is for 10 of those acres, and I believe it's $15,000 an acre, with us paying a 6 percent sales commission to his realtor.
Mr. Jones, have we paid a sales commission to anybody else that's?
No, sir, we have not.
And how much did they pay for the last 15 acres?
Empire's was $20,000.
And Love's was?
$33,000.
You know, this is the first time we've seen this, this commercial contract here. I think we need to get admin to work on this and bring us something back more definitive of what we can.
One of the things that, that kind of is near and dear to me on these is, roughly how many jobs do you?
Hang on a minute, Bill, please. If you will state your name for the record.
My name is Steve Yule. I'm a licensed real estate broker in the state of Florida.
Thank you.
About how many jobs would be affiliated with establishing an Interstate 20 facility there?
With me is Brian Brigman, who will be the purchaser.
Mr. Brigman?
Yeah. We're looking at probably between 15 and 20 employees.
Okay.
And maybe salesmen and different, different style workers.
What kind of business is it? Yeah, what do you do?
It's truck sales.
Used, new?
Used.
Any trailer sales associated with that?
Could be, yes.
Could be?
When you're talking trucks, you're talking big trucks.
Right.
Well, I think, I think before we, I think still before we approve anything to do this, we need to get more information and to fully understand what we're trying to do here with this, because this is the first time I've seen this, or seen any of this. Except what's in the board packet, and it's changed since it's been in the board packet. So, my opinion, I know this is in Mr. Enfield's district there, and he may have comments, but I think we need to work this through admin before we make any decisions here today.
Yeah, Commissioner Bridgen, I agree. I think I'd like to see Mr. Jones get with them. I don't know that I'm in favor of paying, we haven't paid any commissions, and nobody's asked for a commission, so we need to talk about that. I do understand that the very prime piece of property went to Love's, and that was at the highest price. To me, the next prime piece of property was the one that Empire got originally. So I can understand the price coming down, but I don't want to get too far away from what the appraised value was. So, I'd like you to work with them to see if we can't come to a mutually agreed upon situation and bring it back to the board.
Can you imagine what your price value was?
19.5.
As far as I'm concerned, I cannot see where we need to be paying your commission. I mean, we didn't hire you, you were hired by that gentleman there, and I think that's a cost that should be borne by Mr. Big Brigman. And as far as what I'm seeing here on the cost of this thing, by the time we satisfy what is in this particular contract, the cost of that property is diminished quite a bit. So, I think you, like you said, work with commissioners, I mean with the county administrator, and see if we can come up with a, or y'all can come up with a better solution.
Okay. So we understand your direction is for us and admin to work with Mr. Yule and Mr. Brigman to see if we can bring you back a more powerful proposal.
Give us time to read it, yes.
I would also urge that, I don't know of anything that's coming out of the pipe, but if somebody comes in and says, hey, we're interested in that too, they should at least be given the courtesy of saying, hey, and we're not used car salesmen to say, hey, we're going to push you into it, but I think as a courtesy to them that if Joe's Ice Cream Stand says, I want those 10 acres, that they should know that Joe's Ice Cream Stand has expressed an interest to come in and do that, so that we can work together as a partnership as opposed to fight them.
I agree. So, we'd be glad to get with you next day or so and discuss what options everybody want, where we want to get.
So, we are to discuss this with Mr. Jones?
Yes.
He will, he will bring it back to the board then, if you believe there's a, to cover the concerns that the board has already expressed. One of them in particular is your commission.
Does Mr. Jones have the authority to make the decision to accept a counteroffer?
No, sir.
He can bring it back.
Whatever you say, you still want to make an offer to the board, he'll have to bring it back. So if he came back and said, okay, we just changed it by a buck an acre, and everything else stays the same, he's got to bring that back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
They also wanted us to clear the site, I think.
Yes.
We've done that on other parcels, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item, due to some increased activity in Mossy Head Industrial Park and some very strong interest in a number of parcels there, we believe it would be prudent at this time to move forward with bidding out the construction of the wastewater treatment facility. If you recall, we have a permitted facility that's a 250,000 gallon a day facility that would substantially service the industrial park in Mossy Head area with sewer capacity for some time. Our agreement with Dixie RV, which we're currently utilizing their package plant, says that when we're at 75 percent capacity, which is about 43,000 gallons a day, that we will begin construction of this facility. And with a number of potential clients that look to be very promising in the industrial park, we could get to that number rather quickly. So, we believe it would be prudent move at this time to move forward with putting this out to bid. And I will tell you that while the engineering estimates showing here at $3 million, if you recall, we engaged or had a North Florida construction company assist us with some work when we were going through the certification process in the industrial park on this plant as far as the construction schedule. We asked them as a courtesy if they would just take a broad shot at what the today's cost of construction would be, and they came back with a number of about $4.4 million. So over the last few years that this has been on the table, it's probably going to cost us another million bucks or so. But regardless, whatever that number is, this, we'll certainly vet it out through this bid process.
I have a question. I have a question. So we're going to bid out the design of?
No, ma'am, it's designed.
It's already designed?
Right.
And permitted? The construction?
This will be the construction.
Okay. Let me ask you, where, where are the funds from the sales, the proceeds from the sales of the land at Mossy Head that we're accumulating? Where, where are those going? What account are those going in?
We've established a separate account to accept those funds to be used at this board's discretion.
And what's that account name?
Mr. Alfred, I think we just called it Mossy Head Industrial Park Land Sales Fund.
Okay.
But it is clearly identified and it's segregated from any of the funds.
Okay, and those funds can be used for whatever, if the board's discretion, is that what we're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we tried to get them so that they're restricted for infrastructure needs, not just the general discretion, because we've got a lot of other stuff to do.
Have we tried to get them restricted? Have we, have we, have we done that, or is?
We haven't, we haven't near covered the cost of that industrial park yet.
Right, but, but, you know, we need to, I mean, if that's something we need to talk about, because we're, you know, how those funds will be allocated, also to the sales tax, anything coming off the Mossy Head Industrial Park, does it go back into general, general budget, or is it, it does?
The sales and the fuel tax is somewhat restricted by statute as to what it can be used for, but the general sales tax and the adware taxes will go just as any other sales tax, adware tax in the general fund.
Right. I think it might, is somebody keeping a ledger or an Excel sheet on, on the expenses and the revenues coming in specifically from Mossy Head Industrial Park? It would be nice to be able to see, this much money came in from industrial, how are we going to, how's it broken down? How's it going to be used?
We certainly have all the expenses, and other than the Love's settlement, that's the only income we've had, but we hope that grows exponentially over the next month.
But it would be nice to have an ongoing balance sheet.
And we can do that. I think through the clerk's office, by those funds, we'd certainly do that.
So that somewhere down the road, somebody goes, well, that, that money came from there. No, that money, so we have a really good idea about where the money is going.
Certainly. So, Mr. Chairman, the recommendation is that we move forward with accepting bids for the construction of this facility.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried.
And the funding for that is, do we have any idea where, how that's going to be funded?
We're going to go back to standard practice in the days. Mr. Enfield, could you find us that money?
I no longer have that responsibility, however, there's.
But you were good at it.
A short, a short answer is number one, if you don't get an appropriation from either the state or the feds, it'll become sustained through financing, which then when you collect the fees for water and sewer, will take it and pay down that debt. So let's say if it's $4 million, we would go borrow it, and then the people that use the water in the sewer there would be paying a monthly rate, which we've already accepted the rate standard for, and would be paying down the debt.
So there will be a revenue stream to offset the services that they.
But we're hopeful that with the next item on the agenda, that we'll be able to get either the state or the federal government to help us with that, to cover those costs.
Ms. Harris has a question.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Harris, come forward, please. No, come, come, come on. State your name for the record, please.
Suzanne Harris. We're not planning to use any of the BP settlement money if it settles for that, are we?
For the Mossy Head Industrial Park?
For the water treatment wastewater treatment plant?
Not now.
No, I don't think so.
I don't think there's been any decisions to use that money if it's settled, but.
I think that's a good point.
I would hate for y'all to settle for 4.5 million with BP and use that 4.5 million for the Mossy Head Treatment Plant. That's all I'm saying. I'd just like to know where that money's coming from.
I think borrowing. Borrowing it.
We're borrowing money.
We would intend to borrow the money and pay it back with the user fees.
And that's a good point, though. We probably need to discuss, at least discuss, what our, our views are on, and do we just put that in the general fund and use it for expenses, or do we allocate it for something in particular, if, if the settlement is done and all that, this happens?
I think we need to find out if we're settled.
Yeah, I think we need to find out.
Well, of course, that would go without.
Then we can come back and do that, yes.
That would go without saying, yeah.
All right. Let's see, where we at? State and federal appropriations priority?
Mr. Chairman, before you decide, them are a list of projects and that the board, through some discussions with the lobbyists, have identified as their list of priorities. If you still show the 3.3 million under the Mossy Head Wastewater Treatment Facility, we are going to be changing that to 4.4 million based on our estimate. Some of the renovations to the EOC, we're waiting, we're working with the lobbyists to get the appropriate language and the dollar amounts, so some of those we will fill in the blanks a little bit. But what we're asking you to, to look at these as the priorities to be set as we move forward into the legislative sessions, both federally and at state level.
Commissioner Enfield?
Well, Mr. Chairman, one of the things that, that we started down the road on last year and, and didn't know at that time for priority was the water problems in the Douglas Crossroads area. And I know that at public hearings that we've had, the franchisee for this area for, for water is the Defuniac Springs Water System. However, there is a, a fee of about $3 million or so to extend pipes, extend the water system and all of the necessary equipment to get out to that area. I would like to see if there's some way that we can get either into the federal and/or the state appropriations, money to help provide potable water for the Douglas Crossroads area. I realize there's about 150 homes that are involved with this, and maybe not all of them need it, but certainly is an area of the county that if we're going to do any kind of expansion of, of economic development out there, we need to be able to provide good, clean drinking water to those people out there. So, tentatively, was it 3 million, was that the final number?
It was around 3.5.
3.5. I'd like to see us put the 3.5 in and see if we can get either the legislature or the federal government to come up with some portion of that.
And we need to also.
The Small County Coalition is, is part of water in rural areas, so we might could get at least a grant for that.
I think we're going to have to probably work with City of Defuniac, because of the operator for that area, they got the franchise, so it's going to have to be a joint.
Okay.
I would like to see, I'd like to see under water resources, I noticed, why, why does it say we're not going to request any dollar amount on those, number one and number two, on the water resources? It's on page three of eight. It says $2 million for the treatment plant and $3 million for Coastal Dune Lakes, but it says in parentheses, no dollar amount will be requested in the bill. Is that?
Where are we at? Yeah, I'm not sure. Okay.
I don't have the latest copy.
I think that was the recommendation of our, our lobbying company, our lobbyists.
Yeah, not to ask for any money?
Is not to come up with a specific dollar amount. We can certainly follow up to be sure that's still their recommendation.
Okay, one of the things too about the Coastal Dune Lakes is that I think we need to, I noticed in here that one of them was a culvert, which is, which is a specific project, a culvert. I think what we need to add in here is, you know, the remaining four bridges for the Coastal Dune Lakes that we need, that we know we need, and I think we need the Coastal Dune Lake Environmental Assessment. I think we need to be, that's just too vague. I think what it needs to say is establishment of a Coastal Dune Lake Environmental Assessment Management Plan, or, you know, I'm not quite sure what the language is, but something more specific to, to. And then also too, I noticed that a lot of these priorities obviously are, a lot of them small counties, it, it really, it really goes to the north side of the bay with road pavings and such, and of course the Mossy Head and stuff. I would like to see, in the EOC and some of the Florida retirement system, I would like to see us try to get funding in South Walton for our sports complex. Purchase of, of lands and funding for a sports complex for the increasing population in, in South Walton.
All right. Anything else?
All right. So, so, Mr. Chairman, we'd recommend your approval with those changes and comments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, back in June, we presented you with a draft copy of the Local Restore Act Comprehensive Plan. We incorporated your comments into that plan at that time, and we presented it to the Local Restore Act Committee, who has returned it with their comments, which is what is in the copy you have today. What we're asking you to is to take that and at the next board meeting in February 25th, we'll ask you to approve it with the changes as you suggested that date. So, we're not asking any action today other than to make you aware of that. Ma'am?
Really?
You ready to go?
Huh? Well, I just, I mean, I've got to compliment Mike and them, I think they made an outstanding job, yeah.
Oh, you can do that.
They made an outstanding job.
So, at our next board meeting, we'll ask you your approval with the changes that you recommended that date.
And those are in red, right, those are.
They're unlined and striked through.
Okay, but they're, but we can tell what they are, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell on the screen? I read the book, I didn't see if you could see it on the screen.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, is Geronimo Street. If you recall, we had this discussion at our last board meeting, and you've asked for some additional information, we're going to, hopefully we'll provide that some to you. But on the screen, you will see the intersection as it exists today, with none of the turn lanes or any improvements. If you recall in the discussion, the DOT plans to install a traffic signal at this intersection. They have asked the county to install a northbound right turn lane, which you see there in the red hatching. The cost for that turn lane's about $260,000. Contrary to what we were told before the last meeting, the DOT now says that if we don't fund that and build that turn lane, that they will probably not do a, probably not signalize the intersection. that they will probably not do a, probably not signalize the intersection. And so that is the DOT's request, is that we build that. As part of the project, they install the signalization for the intersection. At the last board meeting, there was some discussion about eastbound and westbound right turn lanes. So if you see on this depiction, those are again hatched in red. According to the DOT warrant study, the eastbound turn lane is warranted. However, they don't recommend it being constructed due to the six-lane expansion coming. But they show that the westbound turn lane is not warranted, although those were discussed at our last meeting as considerations for the board. The cost of each of those turn lanes are $171,000 for the eastbound and approximately $184,000 on the westbound. But due to the economies of scale and the managing of traffic and the mobilization, our staff believes that the combination of those three can be constructed for between, less than $400,000. So individually, they're substantially more than if you do them collectively. And then the last slide we have is of the plans of the design when the roadway is, is six lanes, which shows no turn lanes, no traffic signal. Now, it's our understanding that if they put a signal in, they will redesign that intersection to incorporate that signal. So your options today are to do nothing, to work with the DOT, to install that northbound right turn lane, and they will signalize the intersection, or to do some combination of the east and westbound turn lanes as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Let me guess. I know that there is no traffic signal on, on this one. And I know that one of our concerns was the length of time it was going to take to get the improvements in there. But there are three members of this board that are part of the Okaloosa Walton TPO. And there are two other county representatives, one in Freeport and one in Dufunyac Springs. I'm not aware that we had the opportunity to go to the TPO and ask them to reprioritize and move this up and get accelerated funding from the state to accomplish this. Because one of the things I note from, from the plans they've got here, we talked about the, the amount of time it took to make turns out of northbound Geronimo, but it was being backed up because you had left-turning vehicles that were causing right turns to back up. Well, under this plan, northbound Geronimo would be right turn only going on to it. You've got a turn, a turn stacking coming in eastbound to go north on North Geronimo. You've also got a turn coming in, looks like from westbound to come down here. I do believe we need a deceleration lane on, on westbound on the north side of, of 98. I think Mrs. Flint last time showed some of the, the issues are on there, and I would agree that that, that's important. But if that's the case, I don't know where you would need a, an additional rightbound right turn lane on northbound Geronimo from below 98 because it's only going to be one way, and that's, that's the right turn. And.
But you may not need it, but they said they wouldn't put the light in unless you put that in.
But if you take a look at what they're proposing for the six-laning, by putting that island in the middle, and I, and I don't know if the county could even do the island in the middle, but if you, if you do that to take the traffic flow like that with the current four lane, construct the deceleration lane on the north side there.
Close off the median.
Close off the median and, and, and under the four-lane plan, basically do that on, on the six-lane version except on a miniature scale. I would think you would, you would help to solve the traffic issues, and especially if we can, can ask the state to accelerate the funding mechanism on that. Because one of the things that they've cited in their report is that the distance from the next traffic light is .38 miles, which is not consistent with the standards that they've got of a minimum of a half mile between. And, and I'm all for public safety. I'm all for the safety of people that are, that are down there. But I think that with the six-laning coming in and a different traffic pattern that they've got proposed, I'd like to see this board given the opportunity to go ask the TPO, would they accelerate it to get this out of a 10-year cycle?
I heard it was 2024.
What's the 10-year cycle?
It is.
Oh, yeah, that is 10 years.
It's on the agenda for the TPO this month.
I mean, that's a long, that's a long time.
Ms. Commander?
Ladies and gentlemen, I have been on the TPO now for eight years.
And I was on it before.
She was in for, so I think we can say we have five members from Walton County present, you know? We're lucky. We now have three county commissioners and two cities. We have 20 or more from Okaloosa County. Now, even if they voted to move it up, and, and there's a possibility that, it still doesn't mean the state's going to move it up or provide the funding. It could be 10 years from now, or it could even be six years from now before we get the necessary funding for it. And I have been working with these residents. I have been working with DOT for well over two years, and, and I believe Cindy did before when it was her district. And we've gotten them to come to the table and say they're going to put a light in. You can't come out there without going all the way down and turn, coming back around. You can't get to that median without taking your life in your hands. And those signals can be synchronized to where everything on 98 could like be red at one time and green at one time. It can happen.
Hasn't so far.
You know, well, they can do it. I know the state can do it. But I am in favor of going ahead with the traffic light, which we have fought for, and the proportionate share of fair money, which is in the bank from those people around there can pay for the turn.
I understand you get proportionate fair share money. Just that we, we haven't given the, the TPO the opportunity to see if we can get it accelerated. By the way, there's 14 representatives out of Okaloosa County, not 20, but.
Well, outnumber us two to one.
But we worked with them to get the bridge accelerated in priority. And since that time, we have been supportive of all the Okaloosa County needs. I think that there's, there's been a relationship developed where mutual consideration, because we, we work with them as opposed to against them. And I'd like to at least see the opportunity to see if we can get that resolved through there before we take any action unilaterally.
Okay, well, as far as the information I have received is that we're going to discuss this item at the TPO meeting this month. I think it's the 20th, whatever it is. There are two or three major projects in Okaloosa County they'd like to see funded. One of them is the bypass around Crestview and can't remember all the rest of them. Now, those projects are so far down the line that they, unless DOT accelerates them, they're not even in the next five or six years. This particular expansion, as I understand it, to Tanglemar, is about 90% completed as far as the plans, and that they are, they spent millions of dollars to this point. They sure as heck ain't going to shelf it because at about four or five years, they have to do a total redesign, which is additional money. So I'm thinking if we can work with Secretary Barfield, maybe Secretary Passad, we might be able to get this thing accelerated up into the possible 15.
Can I?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, were you done?
I'm done.
Okay. I just know that whenever the county can do something on its own and it's already gotten a sign off from DOT, we ought to go ahead and do it. Because you drag in other counties, the TPO, the DOT on some more things. You, you know, you know how that happens. You're dealing with all, we have a chance right now to put in the lanes that we think are necessary, whether it's a westbound lane or whether it's an eastbound lane with proportionate fair share money, which we have in the bank. We could just write a check. You know, I, I think that we ought to go ahead and pass this. And if you guys can work a deal before this happens, so be it. But my bet would be that this would be built, constructed, and probably overused by the time we got all these other people involved to say yes.
And I appreciate what Ms. Commander says, but I'd like to at least see us given the opportunity to go to TPO and to talk with Secretary Barfield.
I think we ought, you ought to do it. But, but in the meantime, I think, you know, I mean, I'm probably going to make a motion that we go ahead.
Our job is to make this intersection safe.
Right. I think in the meantime.
And all the traffic going through there.
In the meantime, we go ahead and say, let's move forward on this.
Okay. Hang on a minute.
This report right here doesn't even include the dead people, the girl that killed there last year. Doesn't even include her.
She made a motion, but I'm going to say. State your name for the record, please.
Charlotte Flint.
I haven't made a motion.
Well, I thought you said you'd make the motion.
It's got a count down here. Okay, I can't see the intersection. If you notice the drawing, which is the first time many of us have seen this, could somebody please tell me, are y'all going to pull another center to DOT where we have no access now to 98 because you've already blocked off one way down at the other one for the EMS? Now you're going to block the fire trucks from being able to go to the west? Do y'all have a piece of property you'd like to move Station Number Five on and give to the fire department? Because you've made that site useless now.
Charlotte, we did not make that site useless. Don't hang that on the.
Okay, DOT did. DOT did. And that's what we're fighting for right now, folks. We've got to be able to get out there tonight. While I was on my way over here, this is, you missed some of these really joyous things. There was a car that was coming across, going to be heading, I assume, west, although they had no blinker on. A car skid because they pulled out in front of them. She froze in the lane of traffic. You should see the mess that's going on. I went to the center lane, not something I wanted to do, and motioned her to slowly come forward and stop so that she'd be out of the line of traffic and two lanes heading to the east could continue on in the rain. And that's the kind of little things that happen. Luckily, no injuries, but a lot of excitement in that, that little intersection a little while ago. These are some of the things we've just got to.
And I understand, and if it was a right turn only and not a chance to cut across the traffic, that, that shouldn't be current.
I think the reason why the DOT, when I was reading what they sent when I requested it, they were looking at a right turn lane from the southbound because it's going to be a not timed light function, but will be on a demand signal. And if you have that signal going all the way across and that one lane is being used for both, then it's going to actuate that light for a right-hand turn, and it's not necessary to block 98 with a signal.
So every time a car would come up there, it would stop traffic on 98 to get across?
If, well, it would eventually time into it. That's why they were looking for the signal in that location. We've got a halfway, which I see they've gotten rid of. In their better judgment, the triangle, the concrete triangle that exists there right now, where they tried to create three lanes out of two.
Okay.
That's just, just just from my take on their reasoning for wanting the turn signal.
I would like to make a motion now, if y'all would entertain one. My motion would be that we move forward with the westbound right turn D cell lane into Geronimo, the northbound right lane on South Geronimo, and the eastbound right lane, D cell lane on 98, and that we use proportionate fair share funds, and that we do all three of them to get the economies of scale.
And I mean, and you don't want the traffic light?
Yeah, and, and that would include what DOT has, has promised as a traffic light.
Because I think the traffic light is a paramount.
Yeah, this would be what the county would actually be paying for, and the traffic light would go in.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries.
So just to be clear, Commissioner, it's the all-three option of the.
All three options. Make that, make that intersection safer.
Mr. Chairman, the next item, next item is regarding a change to the Land Development Code in the category of limited lodging. If you recall, at the last board meeting, we made mention of this, and we probably gave you a whole lot more material than probably what you needed to make your decision today. But David Theriault has a client that wishes to utilize the language as it's currently in the Comprehensive Plan, as it was amended in the air amendments in 2010, to, to allow limited lodging to be defined as up to 125 units. Our Land Development Code, at that time, prior to that change, the comp plan and the Land Development Code each identified it as up to 75 units. The comp plan was amended through the ear process to 125 units, yet the Land Development Code never was changed to reflect that 125 units. So in order for, so we believe it was the intent of the board at that time for the change to be made to recognize 125, up to 125 units as the appropriate language in defining limited lodging. So the request is that you allow planning to prepare and advertise the appropriate ordinance amendment to amend the Land Development Code to reflect limited lodging as up to 125 units, which is currently in the Comprehensive Plan.
You want to say that again?
I hope that was clear.
You want to say that again?
No, ma'am. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
No, I'm kidding.
A motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second.
Does everybody know what he said?
And the bottom line, all we're asking is to approve the preparation. It'll come back for public hearings before we make any amendments or changes.
Yeah, a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I saw it ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bagby, you don't look like Mr. Bagby.
Good afternoon. Michelle Ray. Mr. Bagby is away at DMAI in Washington, DC. The first item we have is a request to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $174,000 from the Emerging Market Reserves. This is to pay the final Southwest invoice for media that was ran in the 2012-13 fiscal year.
Motion to approve.
The motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
John Irving with the TDC. Just for the remaining very brief update, I'm sure, as you know, the team is all out there working, getting ready for season, which is coming really fast. We are very appreciative that we've been able to add one member to the team. Mr. John Cross has filled a vacant seat for website and graphics coordinator. The rest of the marketing, communication, and sales team have either been or are going to Chicago, Boston, DC, and New York to talk about the exceptional value of South Walton as a destination. And then finally, you, I think, all received the last update, which was bed tax collections for December. That month was up 5.44% over last year's December, bringing our first quarter numbers to a total of 1.45% over the previous year, which I think you all know is the third year of record collection. So much smaller numbers, but still positive and have been positive for a long time.
Okay, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis.
Thank you. Commissioner Yellen? The only item I have on the agenda is a situation has arisen where we were taking a look at the code enforcement, excuse me, the Animal Control Act and the statutes surrounding the Animal Control Act and our policy. One of the requirements is during the, during the process that a hearing could possibly take place regarding whether or not a dog is dangerous or, and there's an appeal process to a hearing officer essentially. Our current policy designates Mr. Jones as the county administrator as a hearing officer or someone that you would otherwise dedicate, appoint. Frankly, having Mr. Jones do that or the county administrator do that when the county employees would be the person who would be testifying before of him, before, seems to me to create a due process problem that I would not be comfortable with. You wouldn't want to testify in front of somebody who has your paycheck in their hands, essentially. So what I've asked, what I'm asking you to do is authorize Mr. Jones or myself, either one, to, to find a separate person other than he to act as a county hearing officer for animal control. Now, when the sheriff takes over, this designation will continue because the county commissioner is the person who, who actually does the designation. So if you would give us that authority, I would be.
Do you need a motion?
Appreciative.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, I will need a motion.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Would that person have qual, what kind of qualifications would that person have?
You know, frankly, I think it probably just needs to be an attorney.
Someone from the legal?
Yeah, and, and only, if for no other reason. If for no other reason, it gives them the ability to protect the due process rights of both sides. Yeah.
A motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, this is a public hearing to approve a resolution amending the budget to move two hundred and fifty thousand from the solid waste landfill fund reserves into the capital project funds for the emergency operations center renovations for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen. Is there any public comments? Seeing none?
We close the public hearing.
No, we're actually moving money, so we need to vote in the public hearing.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Commissioner Meadows.
Need to close the polls.
Oh, well. Got a motion to close in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Commissioner Meadows.
I don't, I don't have anything.
Commissioner Commander.
Not a thing.
Commissioner Enfield.
Nothing.
Commissioner Pridgen.
Nothing.
Commissioner Chapman, that's me. All right. In your packet, commissioners, is a proposal from Mark concerning his office of county attorney. And Mark, if you will, would you go ahead and explain your?
Yes, sir. The proposal is for you to essentially hire me as an employee. There's a salary proposal and some other details in the proposal for me to do that. Also, the proposal includes filling the position that currently exists for Assistant County Attorney for my, our current associate that we're using, Sid Noes, and to bring over Janera Root, who's, who works for my office as the RMLO for the county and.
RMLO.
Records Management Liaison Officer. She would essentially be in charge of all the public records receipts and responses. Also, part of this proposal is that we would begin, and frankly, we've already started doing it, taking in litigation that we are currently farming out inside the county attorney's office. Janera's been my litigation assistant for nine years, ten years, and, and she would take on some of those duties as well because we're going to, obviously Chrissy Singletary is doing those duties now, but with the, with the addition of the other cases that we're going to be taking on, we're gonna need some more help in that area. This will free up Karen Sheehan, who's currently handling the RMLO duties and handling all the bid and contractual duties out of the county office, or county attorney's office to do just that. I say just that. She also, we're gonna expand that role with your permission. We're gonna expand that role to not only participating in the drafting of the bid documents, the preparation of the bid documents, and then eventually drafting and completing the contract documents that arise out of those bids, but also we're setting up two things, and we started this project, but we, again, time is an issue. One is a large spreadsheet, and I want to thank Lyndle, she's been helping with this to some extent, a fairly large spreadsheet that shows start times, end times on every contract. So we don't get in the position which we've been in over and over again to have to extend the contract while we bid it out. We can, we can, we can get the new bid done before the current contract is completed. Also, one of the things, and again, I've been here a year and I've learned some things that we need to do, that we're not doing now, is that at the end of every contract, we need to have a post-contract conference with whoever the contractor is for lots of reasons. One, if it's a construction contract, make sure we get as-built documents. I mean, we're doing that to some extent, but I want Karen in charge of that process. Make sure we get as-built documents, that we have an exit conference with both Public Works and whoever's in charge, and maybe even Larry involved in some of that. I want Karen organizing and arranging that. That's her skill set, she's very good. And then we'll learn some things from that process on accountability. In other words, did we hold the contractor accountable in the right way? Did the contractor feel like he got the necessary information, necessary items that he needed to fulfill the contract and vice versa? Do we get what we contracted for, frankly? So she, that role for her will be expanded greatly and she's, and, and I don't feel like it's fair to her necessarily for her to continue to do public records and do that job once I'm about to expand it, thus bringing Janera as, as well. I will tell you, we're not getting the numbers of public records requests that we have in the past. We still get a lot of them, but in terms of the size of the requests, for whatever reason, the size of the requests has dropped, so we're able, we're responding, but frankly, we need to respond quicker and in a more organized fashion. Part of the reason for, the reason that we're not getting the large ones is I finally, I think, convinced the people who sue us that they don't need to send us a request for production of documents and then a week later send a public records request asking for the exact same thing, that, you know, we'll treat them both the same. So we've made some progress in that area, but, but I feel like this would be a much more organized, much better, and more timely way to respond. Hiring me full-time, obviously, I think you will have the advantage of, I think it's an advantage of having me full-time. My goal would be to start March one. We, we, I mean, obviously, I have a fairly large legal practice. Shutting it down in that amount of time will be difficult, so there might be something that I have to leave for an hour and take care of, or thirty minutes. I don't anticipate there being a lot of that, but that, that might, could happen, but I feel confident we can get it shut down and, and get, get over there full-time.
Will you answer the phone?
I'll answer the phone, yes, sir.
I'll answer, someone teach me how.
I do have that problem at Karen. And by the way, Sid's role initially is going to be, we're taking a hard look at all our, our land use boards, and, and she's going to be helping me do some changes to, to the ordinances and the statutes and also the human resources stuff.
Any questions?
Yes. Within the framework of the fact that we're into a fiscal year already, and this would be five months into it, you'd be able to operate, what you're saying is you'd be able to operate for the rest of this fiscal year on the combined amount that's budgeted for the county attorney's office operations, including your contract and what's been budgeted for outside legal counsel, and meet budget.
Yes, sir. I, you know, and I apologize to you, when I did the analysis, I did it on a calendar year, frankly. I forget about my fiscal years. The short answer is, on a calendar year basis, I, I am firmly in the belief that we will save at, at the very least, a hundred thousand, if not more, in a, in, in the calendar year. The number I gave you in your packet was what the Board of County Commissioners paid in outside legal fees. And frankly, I wasn't aware that, I guess I was, but I just didn't put it in the package. But, you know, Human Resources has a budget, they pay outside legal fees on. We, we can eliminate, in my humble opinion, we're gonna be able to eliminate all, most, if not all, of those fees. So to answer your question, I don't know on a fiscal basis, but on a calendar year basis, yes, sir.
Are you willing to take that challenge to do it for the rest of this fiscal year?
I think so, yes, sir.
I think.
Yes, sir.
Says you'll eventually take over, represent some of the constitutional officers. So how would, how would that be?
Let me put it this way. One, I already, already represent the clerk of court and, and, you know, obviously, the first concern is always there's going to be a conflict of interest. Having represented the clerk for fifteen, sixteen years, I have never known the clerk and the county commission to have to sue each other if that would happen. Obviously, the office of the county attorney would not be involved one way or the other. Yeah. I know Alex is dying to sue y'all or something.
Are you getting additional compensation from the other constitutional officers?
I am from the clerk now, yes, sir.
And would you continue that?
No, sir. No, sir. That's part of the proposal, is the office, the county attorney, would take over those costs that, and frankly, Commissioner, there's no conflict that I would be aware of for Patrick Pilcher's office. Now, there is a very real conflict possibility with the sheriff's office for various and sundry reasons, and also with the property appraiser. And it usually would arise in the context of a tax deed sale. I could see, not necessarily between the county, but between the clerk and the, and the property tax collector's office. So we would probably have to exclude those two constitutional officers.
Any other questions?
And then next year, they all could chip in a little? Alex?
Alex, you've got money in your budget this year to continue part of the, the costs of that.
I'm not part of this conversation. We would, absolutely. Now, what we have budgeted for next year, we would definitely address comeuppance time.
You're a good man. So what do we do now?
I think we need a motion to accept his proposal and move forward. Isn't that right, Commissioner?
I think so.
I think that's the thing.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Let's see. Is there any additional public comments? Come on up, sir. State your name for the record.
Good evening, commissioners, county executives. My name is Art Miller, and I would like to share a couple of comments about economic development. As all of you know, some months ago, earlier in two thousand and thirteen, myself and a group of people representing the Institute for Senior Professionals did a study for the Economic Development Alliance. And I stand here not so much representing ISP, but, but representing myself and my colleagues who worked on the study. One of the things that we identified in that study was that the EDA was seriously underfunded. For those that are not aware of it, the county gives one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars out of a total budget of one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, the remaining coming from Dufunyak Springs, Paxton, and Freeport. At that rate, it's very difficult to, to really mount a serious economic development effort. But my point here is not so much to talk about the EDA itself as to tie it in to what, what you folks addressed before in terms of Mossy Head. When, when Love's was presented to the county, and let me compliment all of you on moving very quickly and getting Love's in here, that's a, was a major find for us, and we're looking forward to, to many years of, of tax revenue from them. But when they, when they bought their property, they pretty much based it on comparable value. Comparable value being when they bought property in Cottondale several years before, they paid about thirty-seven thousand dollars for forty acres. They paid thirty-three thousand dollars an acre here. And when Empire Struck came up to the, to the table, they, they bought their property for twenty thousand dollars an acre, a substantial difference from the thirty-three thousand that, that Love's had paid, which is a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And one of the things we suggested in our proposal was that some of that money taken from the sale of land in Mossy Head be funneled back to economic development. And so I think this was a missed opportunity, and I recognize that the, the key ingredient here or the key factor is jobs. There's no question about that. Jobs is what we're all about. But I think we can have jobs and we can have the sale of property. Everybody who's involved in real estate knows that comparable value is, is what real estate people go by. And so I recognize that, that this may be pushing a rock up a hill at this point, but to sit here and listen to somebody now coming on and saying we want to buy property for fifteen thousand dollars an acre, that's another seventy-five thousand dollars off the Empire price that we're missing. And again, I would urge you to consider holding the line on the value of the property and taking whatever money comes from the sale of Mossy Head, funneling it back into economic development. Because at a hundred and thirty-seven thousand that the county is paying, that is an anemic budget to get the job done. So if you're really serious about economic development, I would urge you to reconsider this and to recognize that we have a crown jewel in Mossy Head and not to give it away.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Come forward, please. State your name for the record.
My name is Carrie Nell Moy. I live at the dead end of Mannerman Beach Lane and the Gulf. And I, you have mentioned two things today that I was hoping you would get into more, and I just wanted to elaborate a little and ask you a few questions. One is, Commissioner Commander, you talked earlier about, something about the fireworks. Unfortunately, I am not up to date on what the state is and is not planning to do about fireworks, but I do want to say that my house is directly on the beach. We have fireworks, fireworks, fireworks going off. It doesn't take anything except somebody's mother's birthday to have fireworks going off. And I have personally had rockets that have gone up, come over, over my house and into my, my yard and, in a dry season. And it's really, really, really bad. And the, the South Walton deputies are absolutely wonderful. I call them, they recognize my name. They said, yes, ma'am, we'll get down there very quickly. They have one really pudgy one that can't quite make it to the beach, but others usually do. I also have asked for permission to use my bullhorn, which I have bought. I said, is it okay for me to do that? And they said, yes, ma'am, as long as you don't try to stop cars on the road. And so I go out and the people are so shocked, they don't know whether God's coming after them or some crazy seventy-four-year-old widow who lives there. And I actually had some people giggle one time, and I said, quit giggling. You know, we are so fortunate not to be experiencing what they're having in Arizona at the time this, this past summer when that was, and she shut up very quickly. And I did, I always tell them, I try to be very polite about it, but I always tell them that we are, I am going to call the sheriff's deputies. Of course, that makes me the meanie of the neighborhood, but I'm just hoping that you commissioners will encourage whatever it takes to get us to keep the fireworks off the beaches. And they never clean up after themselves. They simply never do. The second thing I wanted to, to address was, Mr. Davis, when I saw that you were going to be talking about animal control, I didn't know what it was going to involve. I wish you had gone into some other areas in that we have the same problem with dogs running loose on the beach, doing their business there with even elderly people not picking up after ones. And, you know, you sort of expect them to be a little bit more thoughtful than the younger ones, but they run without leashes. We know we have a leash law. And this, again, I become the meanie again. I go out with my bullhorn and I say, would you please pick up after your dog? And my dog, in the meantime, is inside going wild. He's just a little rescue dog, and he sees these fancy dogs prancing on the beach. And he's a rescue dog, very insecure, and so he sees all these, and he can't even go to the beach, you know, he can't, and, and they're out, you know, going. So I go out with my bullhorn. Again, that's not my, my, I shouldn't have to do that. I, I wish that we would have, you know, that you would enforce this. Whomever should enforce this. So, you know, people, I, I shouldn't have to do that. And I don't want to be the one to be the, you know, and everybody counts on me in my neighborhood, they say, you should get them, you know, and I don't want to be the one. I'm past that age. And so if we could sort of really work about the fireworks on the beach and the dogs, if you read the Northwest Florida Daily News, some lady last week wrote a very, very good letter, perhaps it was this week, letter to the editor about the dogs running loose on the beach in Ocalusa County. Well, believe you me, it certainly happens here. So if you folks would just address that, you know, I would very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is any other public comments?
Yeah, can we ask her back there, would you just for a couple of minutes?
Okay, seeing none. Let's move on. Is there any agenda recap for the staff?
We're clear? Clear. I think we're good to go, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let's move on into.
Don't everybody leave at once.
Quis' judicial. Mr. Price.
Mr. Chairman, we have two items that are on the quasi-judicial agenda. Mark, going to be sworn in for these since they're being continued.
Anyone who just wants to testify on any item on the quasi-judicial agenda, would